Good afternoon and welcome to our last meeting of April. We appreciate those of you in our council chambers and also the folks who are watching us on electricity television. An invocation tonight would be given by Councilmember Kyle Newton and I will lead us in respects to the flag. Please rise.
Father, as the rains refresh the earth, we invoke your presence tonight to refresh those dry and thirsty places within our hearts. We come to you asking for your guidance, wisdom, support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion and allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of our community. Fill us with your grace and continue to remind us that all we do here today is for the greater glory of you and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start our meeting tonight, we have a proclamation. Am I a chief steward to come down?
Well, chief's coming up. I'll read the proclamation and I'm sure he has some comments afterwards. The proclamation reads National Police Week 2017. To recognize National Police Week 2017 and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Anderson Police Department. And whereas nearly 57,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately 15,000 injuries. And whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, 20,933 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including four members of the Anderson City Police Department. And whereas many of those dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC. And whereas 144 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring who died in the line of duty in 2016. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 29th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13th, 2017. And whereas May 13th, 2017 is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in order to all fallen officers and their families and US flags should be flown half-staffed. Therefore, it will be resolved that the City of Anderson Incorporated formerly designates May 14th through the 20th of 2017 as National Police Week in the City of Anderson and publicly salute the service of officers in our community and communities across the nation. Thank you. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. As always, we are very appreciative of the recognition that is provided to law enforcement during this National Police Week. And we also recognize the 144 nationwide who've lost their life this past year. Locally, in the Anderson area, we will recognize these officers on May 9th at 6 o'clock PM at the Anderson County Courthouse. That will be our Fraternal Order of Police Ceremony. I will speak along with Sheriff Chad McBride and we'll have a few remarks. And we will call the names of all those that were, have lost their lives here in Anderson County and have a moment of remembrance. And I invite the public to come and join during that time. Thanks, Senator.
The minutes of our April 10th meeting have been distributed. Are there any corrections or additions? I'm sorry. Was not going to get you sworn in. Chief Richard, your honor.
Mr. Mayor, council staff, I appreciate you giving us a few minutes of your time tonight to swear in probationary firefighter Rashad Harmon. Rashad is a 2008 graduate of Fairfield Central High School. He also attended Spartanburg Methodist College and has graduated South Carolina Fire Academy where he received his National Firefighter II certification. Rashad volunteered with the Unifier Department in Spartanburg County and Rashad is also a personal trainer, so I have to be careful he might hurt me. At this time Rashad, could you raise your right hand and repeat after me? Aye.
Aye, Rashad Harmon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To do my duty.
To do my duty.
As an Anderson City firefighter.
As an Anderson City firefighter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
To serve my commanding officers.
To serve my commanding officers.
With respect.
With respect.
Dignity.
Dignity.
And to serve the citizens of Anderson.
And to serve the citizens of Anderson.
With compassion.
With compassion.
Courage.
Courage.
And integrity.
And integrity.
And to uphold the laws.
And to uphold the laws.
Rules.
Rules.
And regulations.
And regulations.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The state of South Carolina.
The state of South Carolina.
And the city of Anderson.
And the city of Anderson.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Red light.
The minutes have been distributed. Are there any corrections? Should it April 10th be...
First by Mr. Harmon. Second by Mr. John Roberts. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the minutes of April 10th passed unanimously. Yeah, one item of old business and that item is request consideration of an ordinance to rezone 320 Sayer Street from White Industrial to Heavy Industrial.
Mr. Mayor, that area is in my district and I do have some concerns I'd like to address with the developer to vote on this. I would like to ask if we could postpone this and if we had the opportunity.
We have the request from Dr. Thompson. First, have second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed. Let's postpone until we get those items requested. Yes, Mayor. We have three items of new business and the first item is request consideration of adoption of the 2017 Recreation Master Plan. Ms. McCall?
Mr. Mayor, council, the Recreation Master Plan that's before you tonight is the culmination of a lot of public input, a lot of stakeholders who we consider partners in our community who participate in a variety of ways in recreation. And what you have before you is the 2017 Recreation Master Plan. One of the things that I will say about this plan is the last time we did this was in 2008. And this doesn't mean just because we have an updated plan that we tossed all of the recommendations that were in that 2008 plan that we did away with those. In fact, just the opposite. You made great progress on our recreation facilities and programming from that 2008 plan. So of those things that we didn't get around to complete, those items, if they're still valid, and many of them are, those items are included in the 2017 plan. And you will notice in the 2017 plan, not only does it talk about the things that we have not yet gotten around to, but it talked about the number of things that we also did accomplish. So it addresses your facilities, it addresses your programming, the community surveys. There were two ways, multiple ways that we actually received public input. We did two different types of surveys. One of those was a community survey. The community survey was meant to really find out from people if they used our parks, if they knew about our parks, what they thought was great about the parks, what they thought might be missing about the parks, all of those kinds of things. The second type of survey that we did was Recreation Center user survey. And that was intended principally to find out from people who used the Recreation Center, whether it was for fitness or baseball or whatever it was. We found out what they participated in, what they felt we needed more of, what we might need less of, how they felt about a variety of things. In addition to kind of the traditional survey instrument, we also sought public input by going to places like the Block Party, by going to Carolina Renn Park for movie nights and getting input from kind of non-traditional ways. So I think, you know, it would be fair to say that for the input portion of this, we spent six months really trying to elicit from people who we know use our facilities or would like to use our facilities. We found out a little bit more about their needs or wants and desires. But we thought it was equally as important to find out from people like, who are also in recreation in some facet, whether it's Anderson University, whether it's AnnMed, whether it's the YMCA. We've got input from a variety of people like that who we would call community stakeholders, meaning that they have some, there's some aspect about their work that connects them to our recreation. So what's on the agenda tonight is for your consideration to adopt the plan. Adopting the plan means that you've identified a roadmap. It gives the staff direction on how to, where do we go from here? Do we take any one of these items that are in the plan and develop that more fully? Adopting the plan does not commit you to any funds for any particular project. Any particular project would come back to you for its funding and for its approval, for design if that were necessary, or whatever those next steps are. So one of the things that I would tell you that I think is, the document is filled with a lot of intense data that tells you about our community in terms of its demographics. It also tells you more details about what those people who participated in the surveys, what they actually told us. But I'll tell you, one kind of staggering number to me was the fact that when we opened the Recreation Center in 2006, the number of people that we had come to participate at the Recreation Center in 2007, that was the full year, was 19,000 people, 19,000 visits in that one year. In 2016, that grew to 89,000 participants. Now that's people, that's visits, people who came through the door, checked in, walked on the track, used exercise equipment. It doesn't include day pass people who, excuse me, it includes, doesn't include day pass people. But, you know, I think what that shows is the master plan updating it is valid in the sense that we're not quite the same in, recreation has a different definition in our community today than it did 10 years ago, and the plan helps identify that. So adopting it would give the staff direction. It would also allow you as a council to make decisions on priorities and funding as we go forward. So it doesn't commit any dollars to it tonight, but is a roadmap for the future. And it's meant to be essentially a 10-year plan to give you kind of a frame of reference.
Thank you. I know we've all had an opportunity to look at it and open it up to discussion. Mr. Stewart?
First of all, I'd just like to make a point of clarification. I think while it's true that, you know, our activity in our Recreation Center has drastically increased from 2006 to 2016, the number of 19,000 to 89,000, that's not, you know, 73,000 more people that's came in. And that could be more visits. I could come into the Recreation Center three times during one day and that's three visits. So it doesn't mean the number of people is the number of visits. Whether it's by one person or by 85 people, it doesn't matter. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that that's not 89,000.
It's visits. If I go work out five times a week at the Rec Center, I'm counted, my visits are counted five times.
That's right.
But it's a level of activity.
That's right. But it's a true statement that we have drastically increased and we've outgrown what we've done. And I think that this master plan is warranted. However, I would like to ask is that, I know we were provided this plan via email and I haven't been able, and I think other council members hadn't been able to open up the email and they had a book here for checkout, which I just got mine today. I haven't had a chance to digest this big book that we have for the Master Recreation Plan. And two, when we went out and met with the citizens and asked for their input in this plan that you have, that we have before us, we, at least I can say in my district, at our community meetings, we looked our citizens in the eye and said, hey, we want your input. We want you to be a stakeholder. We want you to be a part of this because this is going to be your master recreation plan, not the city council, but the city of Anderson's master recreation plan. And before we make a decision on anything, we will bring this plan back before the community to make sure that what you've told us is that we've heard, that we've tried to implement it, and if we haven't been able to implement it, here's the reason why. Well, we haven't took this plan back before the committee, but back before our citizens, which we told them we would do. And what I would just ask is that we postpone the adoptment of this plan until we're able to take this back before the citizens who took of their times to give us the input so that they can see what the plan is all about. So that would be my suggestion. And what I would ask is that we bring it back before council the first meeting in May. Because that way our community meetings can meet, well, it'll be the first meeting in June because our committees meet the month of May and then our community meetings and then it will be ready for presentation back here on June 2nd, Monday in June. So I'll just...
Are you saying that, let me clarify, the first one is the reason that you haven't read the plan is because the administrative team didn't get you the material?
It was because the document that we were emailed, I couldn't open it up.
Yeah, it was hidden.
They didn't check out. So I'm checking out a book to read, to go through page by page. I heard the presentation today. But again, more importantly is getting this thing back before the citizens and making sure that the citizens have input because I'm sure, it's kind of like asking somebody to go to a dance. You know, you ask them to come be a part of this and then you don't, you know, let them, you know, their input is not heard. Well, I want to assure them that their input has heard, that their input was heard. And so if you invite somebody to a dance, you want to dance with them. And so I would just ask that we postpone it so the first meeting in June.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Chad.
Question I have is with most studies, did, you know, the information was assimilated from the different organizations and different, within the committee, within the previous plan. But once that, once that plan was put together in a preliminary stage, did it come back before the committee for review to say, well, we really don't think that this is as important as this? And then before, if that was done, prior to, prior to us adopting it, I don't know that we as a council have met collectively to try to say the pros and cons of things that we may like or dislike about the plan. So, I mean, I would kind of agree with Tony that I believe that, I think certainly we need to meet as a, I'm not on the Recreation Committee, but I think the committee needs to meet to review the plan collectively and the council needs to also here. I've had the book for two weeks and I'm a little over halfway through it. I mean, obviously it's several hundred pages, 300, 400 pages?
174.
Yeah. So, but I mean, it's, so I've gone through it and, you know, and made some notes, but I don't know when do we address those?
It has been back before the Recreation Committee. And just to clarify Mr. Stewart's point, the plan was put together. The survey instruments do provide a very, very important piece of this in terms of getting community input. We've distributed the surveys at the Southeast Anderson Community Task Force, the Concerned Citizens of the East Side, the West Side Community Center, the ABC Group, C2 Neighborhood Watch Block Captain Group, Imagine Anderson, Royal Baptist Church for their youth input, the Lions Club, Kiwanis Clubs, twice at the Block Party, movie nights, Carolina Renn Park and School District 5.
Excuse me, if I could interject, what I was asking, has it gone back to any of those organizations or the committee for adjustment to the plan?
It has not gone back to those groups because we took their input to develop the plan.
May I interject something, Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Love?
Why do we need to go back to the public? Because this is just a plan.
You want to make sure that the, you know, the public wants to make sure, I would think that, well, at least I can speak on behalf of the constituents that I represent, is that you want to make sure that what they suggested is that their suggestions are being heard, either being adopted or not being adopted. A lot of times we go and ask for input and then they never get, you know, there's no, the input is never heard. And so you want, you know, if you're asking for somebody's input, you want to be able to bring them back something.
They will be given that opportunity.
When? This already going to be adopted. Is it?
It does, but it doesn't mean that we can't go back and later, when we get to that part of the plan, take it to the people and see whether or not they like that. If they don't, then...
Mr. Robertson, then?
About halfway through, it gives you a number of the survey and then what the people had suggested. So that's about halfway through it and a little deeper on past that. But number two, I'm not a master planner, so I don't have my answers this right and wrong. That's why we've got the Bujgeri group to do it for us. But, you know, I just, I think the input, you know, has their voice been heard? What's in there statistically it shows what was heard. And, you know, I don't know. Some of it I even had problems digesting.
Was it implemented? I don't know. Was it implemented in part of the planning phases? I don't know that, you know. Because there's, as an implementation, you know, I think there's a list in there based upon what I heard today is yes, all the suggestions are in there. You've got 150 from the community groups and 165 that came out of the Recreation Department. But was any of those actually listened to and were they implemented? And if so, what the case may be. But I don't ever remember the last time that I remember that this plan came before the Recreation Committee is that we had a meeting and we was broke up into numbers. And then there was a lot of questions asked and they said, oh, all your answers will be in the book at a later time. Now, I don't remember unless it was at the last Recreation Committee meeting last week or two weeks ago when this plan was brought back before. But, because I sat on the Rec Committee and I haven't seen this plan come back before the Recreation Committee unless it was at the last meeting two weeks ago.
Well, it was not two weeks ago.
I'm a little confused now. I was unable, I sit on the Recreation, but it had been there forever on Recreation Committee. But I was not able to come to the last meeting because of things happening in my life. So I have also not been able to read that because of things happening. So I'm a little bit with Tony in that I would like to be able to actually kind of look at this. It's 180 pages or something like that?
700.
700. So I don't know if it would be, you know, possible for us to maybe postpone this adoption until we've had a little bit more information and we can, as a committee particularly, since I've been here so long with the recreation, to have a chance to kind of read through it. And I know that you gave a good, you know, survey, a good overview tonight of what's in the book. But I think maybe I'd feel a little bit better if I had a chance to kind of at least go through some of this.
Mr. Mayor, if I could interject one more thing?
Go ahead.
Agreeably, if it's something we're going to adopt for the next 10 years, to me another 30, 45 days is worth giving it back before, you know, even my group, you know, that we have at the Neighborhood Watch for C2, I could get it back before them just to get some input. But typically, typically in most studies or most, when it comes to implementation of projects, you would, you would give input to a, the client would give input, which is all the constituents and all of us would give input. And then at some time preliminarily, it would come back to the client to review what is going to be presented and then brought into a final statement.
And I think that's what we've always done. For example, if we picked a project, okay, we would look at the scope of work, look at the, all the particulars that would come into that scope of work, and it always comes back to the council, through the committee. It always comes back to the council. I agree with Mr. Lockers, this is just a plan. It's not set in stone. And I know we, I sense that we're not on the same page here in regards to how we go forward on it. But I just wanted to make the point of it always comes back to, through a committee, to council to be voted on. Then Mr. Stewart?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. McCall, just correct me if I'm wrong, but at the end of the day, this essentially just serves as a framework.
Yes.
It's a guiding principle, a guiding document for the administration. And at the end of the day, everything still rests, any individual project that's determined still rests with council. At the end of the day, it's a framework for you and your team to execute.
Yes, sir. If I could give an example, I wouldn't want the public or any of the council members to think that this plan is something that is just vastly full of all brand new stuff. It isn't. One, it does have some new things in it, like a... One, it does have some new things in it, like about the Recreation Center in particular, that's one piece that is absolutely brand new. One of the things that I do think it does, that I think we should all be proud of, is that it does take things that you have adopted, like your Greenway, um, and Bike Way Plan, which you have adopted, and it makes it part of this plan. So it takes things, projects that were on your drawing board before, like in the, um, East Side Rec Complex and the Jim Rice Center, like B Thompson Park. Those are very, very valid projects still. It recognizes that and, and allows those to be reiterated in the plan. So again, it, it is a framework. Any individual project would come back to you, but it gives the staff direction that says, yes, move, move forward. We're already moving forward to some degree on the, um, Jim Rice Center because the building is vacant and we're doing the asbestos abatement and so forth. So it, if the plan or it were, were your wishes to move forward with that, then that's certainly a good example of a project that was in your plan that you could tell the staff to go develop the details on. So it's, I wouldn't want you to think that everything we did before has, is negated by this new plan. It, it isn't. It has a, a lot of, a lot of, um, your existing plans built into it.
I know, so, uh, let, let's do it, Mr. Hawkins, since he had to say it, so then I'll come back to you. Real quick, um, the 2008 Master Plan, it had stuff in there that is not any valid today. So it was taken out of the plan that we never did. And then there's some stuff that is still valid today that has been incorporated into our new Master Plan now. Plus there's new things that have come up that we, that they foresee in the next ten years might be something that we wait, want to do. That's the, that's sort of what the, the document is. It doesn't say, hey, you need to go buy, build this or that. And the other thing that, you know, taking it back to the, to the public, I, I certainly have, don't have a big problem with it, but the, the question I have, when I looked through the surveys and where people, you know, I, I always looked at the swimming pool because we used to have a swimming pool.
That's right.
And, and, you know, and so I, if we take it back and something's not in there, that somebody, that one particular citizen, I think that's, that was sort of how it was designed, was it, it talked to as many people as it could and if a hundred people voted for a new ball field at the Recreation Center, that was probably a high priority. If one person voted for, um, a canoe access at Darwin Wright Park, nothing against canoeers, but, you know, one person, that's probably not high on the priority list. So I, I think, you know, they were listened to because that's how they came up with the, you know, the priorities of what we get from the, and it, and it, you know, if, if the constituents need time to read it, I mean, it was a hard read. I think I shared with Mr. Stewart, I pulled it up and, you know, and it was, it was a big read. It wasn't a sit down twenty minute, you know, glance through summary. Um, but when I was, you know, milling my way through it, you know, I, I was saying, well, this is just a big scope of stuff. It doesn't tell us what to do number one and what to do number seventy-five. It has ideas and us as a council are gonna get to pick out. We might wanna do seven, number seventy-one or ten or five. And, and it may come from our constituents saying, hey, we need this. Or it may come from our citizens, their participation in our recreation plan. We're not adopting, you know, that we're gonna do one, two, three, four, five. We're gonna be able to make that from our community meetings. I don't have a problem if you need to take it to the community meetings and let them look at it, but we're gonna have to be hard pressed if, 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 you know, if I go to a community meeting and there's ten people that want something that's not on there and there's five hundred people that didn't want it, you know, how, that, to me, it's gonna be a challenge explaining to those ten people why they're not getting exactly what they want or why it's not number priority one or priority seventy. And, you know, we had four hundred over here that want this.
Well-
Cause that's how the, the country we live in is, you know, we're, by voting, which we're gonna vote tomorrow.
Couple more comments, Mr. Stewart?
I think, uh, to answer your question, Mr. Harvard, I think you're missing what I'm trying to say. I think when we, when we look, my, the constituents that, that I represent, that you represent, that John Roberts represents, the mayor represents, we told them that, you know, once we came up with a preliminary plan, we were bringing this back to you for like a, a presentation to say, hey, here's what we came up with. You know, we had a presentation here tonight in the pouring down rain. How many people you think from neighborhood elderly people who participated in, in those surveys could get out here tonight? There was nobody in, in the audience tonight other than myself, you know, for, for the majority of the meeting. Mr. Lock, Councilman Lockridge-
And I think that's sort of the point.
And so, you know, my thing is, is that why can't we get the gentleman who came and made this presentation come to make some of those same presentations in front of the community meetings out? You know, we done spent all this money on the plan, what's a little bit more than having them come make these presentations and say, hey, here's what we got? Or either Mr. Bellwell can do it, you know, he's very versed on this plan and say, hey, here's, here's the plan that we came up with, but we, we, we told the citizens that we would bring something back for them, like Don said, you know, like preliminarily say, hey, here's what we came up with. Well, if we told them that, then I think that we ought to do what we said we were gonna do.
So how are you gonna go back to the block party? I don't mean to get in a debate, Mayor, out of order or something, but how are you gonna get them to go to the block party and see those same people that were down there and get their input?
I didn't tell the people at the block party, did you? I told the people that I represent on the, at the Southeast Anderson Community Task Force, at the East Side Concerned Citizens, who in turn probably had over ninety percent of their surveys that were turned in in the community groups.
That's Dr. Thompson. We're wrapping up.
There's no need for, for any debate, of course. No need for, I think we're all saying, and you know, I personally, I'm saying, I have not had a chance to attend a committee meeting or to even read the plan. The people in my, in C5, I know that they would be, they don't wanna go through this whole big plan, but just generally speaking, I think it would be a good idea as we have our committee meetings, as our, our, uh, meetings, community meetings during the month of-
May.
May, that it would be a good thing to say that we have, using your input, we have developed a plan. And generally speaking, here's what it covers. I can't imagine anybody in my community who's gonna say, oh, I don't like this, I don't like that. They would be aware and we would be, you know, tell them, here's what we're coming up with. We're gonna start and we're gonna, you know, I, I, I just don't see whether that would be a big problem. I don't think that's gonna change much of anything, but, you know, it would, uh, let the community know, this is what we came up with, based on what you said.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, and I think we all have valid points, but I, I have a sense that just from the discussion, I could be wrong. I've been wrong before, but I think we have some council members that wanna adopt the plan and some that don't.
I, I don't think, Mayor, it's not adopting the plan. I don't mean to interrupt you, but-
Yeah.
But I don't think it's nobody sitting around in the stage who said, ah, we don't wanna adopt the plan.
Yeah.
I think we are.
I, I, well, I'm not.
And another reason I say that is, you know, I mean, what, what's the timeline? I mean-
There is no timeline.
How long, no, in regards to start the timelines on when we said, okay, here's the document, here it is at the, at the office where you can come see it, how long has it been?
Well, you approved the contract in January of, with, with Land Plan South in, in January of 2016 and we've had the plan available since, um, end of February, first of March.
It's been available for two months. In regards to taking it back to the community, taking it back to community groups, I, I guess that's what I'm having a hard time with, it's been available.
Just a basic framework.
And it's just a framework.
I don't understand why we can't go ahead and pass this and then go ahead and take it to the community.
I think it's more goodwill. It's more goodwill. It's you say what you mean and you mean what you say. If you tap, if, 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 if council members said, we're gonna get your input and we're gonna bring it back before you, before-
I get that, but-
But again, like-
Why hasn't it been taken back to the community?
But let me say this, if you, if you take it back to the community, Mr. Mayor?
How do you take it back to the community?
What's the big deal?
What's a month when it comes to ten years?
It's a two-year. I mean, what's the big deal?
I made, I made a motion to postpone it for thirty days.
Sir.
Well, first by Mr. Chapman, and second by Mr. Stewart. Any other discussion?
By the purpose of-
Of, of, of getting it back to-
For goodwill.
For goodwill to the community, to allow us to, to, in good faith, move it forward, you know, within the next, I guess, the June first meeting or June, first June meeting.
And give those of us who haven't had a chance to digest the plan to continue to digest the plan.
Got that, Peggy? All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor of postponing it for those reasons, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
It'll be four to three.
Do you need to vote? Do you need to vote?
That'll be four to three. One, two, yep. Five, three.
Okay, five, three.
Five, three.
See the five, four, four, four?
Five, three.
Okay.
I entertain a motion to adopt the plan?
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to approve the administration's consideration to adopt the 2017 Recreation Master Plan.
First by Mr. Newton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harvard. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That'll be five to three to adopt the plan. Our second item is request consideration to purchase material for the North Street Drainage System Improvement Project. Ms. McConnell?
Mayor, we're, we're fortunate and unfortunate in this particular, um, project. Fortunate in the sense that we're able to address drainage, storm drainage issues that, um, appear to be ve- very relevant in today's, um, rains that we've had yesterday and today, but also unfortunate in the sense that, um, part of our system, drainage system, that now has twenty or so years in its lifespan is now reaching the end of that life expectancy. And of course, we did, we, we discovered this when we, um, have, oftentimes when we're out doing inspections, but sometimes it's simply the forces of nature that cause a sink hole to, uh, appear and the staff discovers what the cause, root cause of that is. This particular project is one of those situations where we've had that twenty-something year old corrugated metal pipe underground as part of our drainage system that has now failed and needs to be, um, addressed and, and remedied. Um, this, it particularly involves replacing a hundred and thirty-five linear feet is the pipe, metal pipe of seventy-two inches in diameter that allows us to reduce the, um, size of the diameter to sixty inches because it is a, a plastic type pipe. And it also means repairing two catch basins that, that are attached to the system. This is in the area of, of North Street that, um, connects to our Ore Street Regional Detention Ponds. I think it's important to note that although this is one, hundred and seventy-five, excuse me, a hundred and thirty-five foot section, it is also an integral part of two hundred acres that drain into that Ore Street Drainage System. So it would certainly allow us to address a sys, a section of our system that is failing now. It, the good part also is the fact that we are able to do this project in-house. We have the manpower and equipment to do that. So what is before you tonight is the funding of the material cost, thirty-two thousand two hundred and eighty dollars that would buy the materials for this particular piece of project, excuse me, this particular project. Uh, you do have funds in your Stormwater Utility Budget, capital projects, you've got four hundred and forty thousand dollars that are, are in that fund that are available for capital. This has gone before in the Public Works Committee and we would, as your staff, along with them, recommend, um, approval of the material purchase and this, this project. We also have, um, our staff is here, but Billy Goldner is tonight's expert on this particular project, so if you have some, um, technical questions or things that you'd like to address to Billy, he's available to help us.
Any questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Um, Harvard? Where exactly, where exactly is this on North Street?
The failure in question starts at a catch basin at one oh nine North Street and goes diagonally towards a catch basin in the Ore Street Detention Pond.
Ore to gossip.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And, and what, um, how many, like, yards or people's residence would this impact? Go through replacing this line?
Uh, two side yards.
Two side yards?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And we feel in-house that we can, uh, excavate what's there, put the new pipe in, tie it into the catch basin and have a limited impact on the citizens?
Yes, sir, we do. We, we've been in, uh, discussion with the citizens. They're aware of, uh, kind of, there'll be a little bit of a, a little bit of a mess to do the work, but they're excited to see the problem go away.
Yeah.
Mr. Chapman, then Mr. Roberts.
Is this the continu- continuation of a project that we had done, uh, maybe seven or eight years ago?
Yes. It is part of the, um, the Ore Street Regional Detention Pond that was constructed in two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten. This is a seventy-five, uh, uh, pipe that drains seventy-five acres of developed residential area that drains into it. It's just, as Ms. McConnell said, system is unfortunately, it's in a failed state, it's kinda reached its useful life.
All right, thank you. Uh, can I interject something?
Ms. Luck, go ahead, Ms. Luck.
Uh, I was at a meeting and one of the problems that they're having over there is basically the same problem that we had at Lindy Park. Uh, there were a lot of sinkholes and, um, again, you're talking about a problem that i- isn't gonna go away because that old galvanized pipe is just being eaten up a lot. So something has to be done to make sure that the neighbors are safe. We wouldn't want children falling in those sinkholes or anything like that, so I think it's a wonderful idea to go ahead and do it.
Mr. Howard?
I was gonna say pretty much the same thing. Staff gave a wonderful presentation, uh, about this project and the society that we're gonna be able to do most, if not all of it.
Yes, sir.
It's all of it in-house. So, uh, Mayor, with that and then give, seeing the, the need for the repairs to be made for safety, uh, say we, uh, request, well, we approve this stuff.
Not second.
Uh, first by Mr. John Roberts, second by Mr. Lockridge. How many projects do we have on the table right now? Would you say?
We have, um, more, more, more projects than we've got paper to put 'em on, I think, really.
And money.
And, and money. I, I, it's a good question though, Mayor. I think, uh, from the committee, one of the things that the committee did say is, right now, because we're in that, I guess, timeframe of, of, of our city's life, where a lot of that, um, metal pipe underground in our system was pipe that was given to us probably twenty, twenty-five, thirty years ago, and it is reaching its, the end of its useful life. So we're, we're not really at the point where we're, um, where we have advanced to where we can really be greatly proactive, accepting your major projects like the Ore Street Detention that we're talking about and some of those others that we've done, but we're kinda playing catch-up with some of these remedial type projects. But fortunately, we do have those funds available that allow us to truly make, um, difference to our, to our system and for our-
So we have long-term projects and we have projects that we're very reactive to just because of basically rain.
And we will still have projects that we have to contract out, but ones like this, where, where it's compact enough and, um, and we have the expertise and the equipment to do it, this is a good example of a project we can tackle in-house.
Okay, we have first, we have second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passage and answer, thank you. Our last item is request consideration of a contract for revenue expense analysis for the utility fund. Ms. McConnell?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call on Assistant City Manager David McEwen and Jeff Caldwell is here as well, um, headed up this project, and I'd like to ask them to share it with you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, um, the staff issued a RFP, uh, for qualified consultants to conduct a comprehensive revenue and expense analysis for the utility, uh, funds, I mean, the water and sewer. Uh, we are providing- the water and sewer. Uh, we are providing reputation, a recommendation for you tonight to, for consideration to move forward with the study. Um, as way of background, the city last conducted a revenue and expense analysis in 2011. Uh, this was in combination with, uh, 2012, uh, refunding of bonds, uh, for the utilities. As standard practice with utility management, these studies are conducted, uh, normally every five years. It is also part of our agreement with our utility partners, Anderson County and Homeland Park, uh, to conduct the study and look at, uh, the cost allocation. The scope of the study essentially has three parts. The city's sewer utility, the two number, the sewer treatment O and M review with our partners of Anderson County and Homeland Park, and through our water utility. The intended study is to independently assess utilities in regards to future utility cost of service over a five-year period, review direct sewer costs that the city and its partners pay for the wastewater treatment plants, and to ensure the equity and alignment in accordance with our partner agreements. And that's really what triggered the study is, uh, our, our agreements that we have from the sewer side with Anderson County and also Homeland Park stipulates that we'll conduct the study, um, and, and be able to determine their cost allocation, which sets their O and M rate, their operations maintenance rate for them. It's also to evaluate the city's wholesale purchase of water costs from Anderson Joint Regional Water System, provide a comparison of utility system cost ratios against industry standards. Uh, we received three proposals. Um, all three, uh, came from very reputable firms that have been in this industry for some time, um, have done numerous, uh, rate studies, uh, for utilities in South Carolina and across the southeast. Uh, we have, um, three proposals here before you. Rapetilis, financial consultants from Charlotte, North Carolina, for $42,555. Stantec, uh, North Charleston, South Carolina, uh, $36,050, and Wildon, uh, $36,080, and they're from Orlando, Florida. The proposals were reviewed by our recommendation committee, uh, consisted of Mr. Caldwell, uh, Marty O'Martin, and myself. Uh, we used a, uh, point system, uh, that's attached, uh, to your background information for your review as well, in determining the, uh, based on really three areas: firm qualification, team qualifications, and costs. And again, all three firms were great, um, could naturally almost recommend any of the, any of the three. Uh, we really feel like Stantec put together a very good experienced team for us. Also, uh, we checked their references and detail. Powdersville Water District, one of our neighboring water utilities, has used them for, uh, quite some time, and has, and has used, um, uh, most recently, uh, plant study from 2014 to now. They have one in place with them. Town of Lexington, City of Columbia, Broad River Water Authority in North Carolina, there's numerous other, uh, utilities in South Carolina and North Carolina they've conducted these studies for. We would, uh, start off with a kick, kickoff meeting in June or July with this, and, uh, and look to incorporate the study after the council's review input. What they do is build a model out for us, and it, and it looks at, uh, you know, revenue that's bringing in, cost allocation, debt service, reserves, uh, capital that we need, continuing investment into the system. And that model allows us to, uh, get a little interactive with it and decide, um, how we're going to fund the utilities over the next five years, what projects we're going to do. And, and also, it, it looks at, again, our partners' costs in these projects and determines that new rate for them. Uh, so we've talked with both Anderson County and Homeland Park, and they, they have agreed with our direction on this. Our recommendation is to move forward with, uh, awarding a contract to Stantec. Take any questions that you may have?
Thank you. Questions?
The basis of this whole study is to find out whether or not the rates that we're charging customers is the proper rate and the rates that, that the water system is sending the water to us is the proper rates. Is that basically what it is?
Yeah, these studies are also called cost of service. So, Duke Energy, the electric utilities, water, sewer, uh, your natural gas utilities all do these studies, and you have an independent person look at them. It's to really, uh, verify that your, your cost to serve that particular customer class, so you have different customer classes: residential, multifamily, industrial, wholesale customers, um, is adequately proportionate to what they're paying. So, you wouldn't want one class subsisting another class. That would essentially be, uh, uh, could be a challenged rate, and that's why you have a third party to take a look at it. And it sets a path forward for you over a five-year period in funding your utility.
Anything else?
It's more of a comment, but, um, I, I, surprisingly, I don't think I've ever, my nine years on council, I've ever seen, uh, bids come in that close to one another.
Yeah, it was, it was, well...
It's less than $1,100.
It's, it's really great to have these, uh, the, the general cost, um, and, and from other utilities I've managed, um, is, is you see these studies really in the $40,000 range. I know the last time we paid $40,000 for it, uh, so we feel like it's a real competitive bid. Um, if you looked at their analysis of how they calculated their, um, their actual bid amount, uh, they did it per billable hours, and so it was, uh, just a coincidence they came in within $30 with each other.
It's also interesting that we, uh, brought in someone in our state. It's a boy from, uh, Eastside, Charles, not a district?
Yes, they, they, they have, uh, team members, and how these, uh, how these teams work is, you know, they all have different offices, but our local office and our team member that will be working on this is from North Charleston. Uh, there's also an individual from Atlanta. However, we'll be coordinating mostly with the North Charleston office on this one.
Good. Anything else?
With that, Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve this.
Second.
Uh, first by Mayor Pro Ten, second by Dr. Thompson. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passage and answer. Thank you, Mr. McEwen. Administration briefing, Ms. McConnell?
Well, we're almost at the end of April, but this is a busy week. We have Economic Development Committee meeting tomorrow morning at 8:00, Neighborhoods and Housing Committee meeting Wednesday at noon, and this weekend, on Friday, we have Art on the Town, the Art Crawl, uh, where we also will have five new, um, sculptures placed downtown for public view for the next year, and a number of our, I think there are 10 different venues where, uh, public art from the jury show will be part of the Art Crawl. So, we certainly encourage you to, um, enjoy a, a night of activity that culminates in Carolina Renn Park. So, lots, lots going on to close out the month. Mayor, that's all we have.
Anything to make?
I'd like to mention that the May...
May?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. So, oh, May, I do have one correction.
Yes.
Especially, um, if you'll notice, the West Side Community Center of Yala is not May the 5th, but May the 12th. Um, and, um, on Tuesday, May the 2nd, sounds in the park at 7:00 to 9:00 at Carolina Renn Park. So, we're starting the month of May off with a bang.
It'll be very helpful as well as if we can just make sure that for our community meetings, that the, uh, staff members show up to the community meeting. You know, you could have a community meeting where representatives don't show up for the citizens to spread their concern.
So, no. Anything else? I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Please.
Uh, first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stay in adjournment.